The work session for this evening. Our mayor had another appointment, so I will be conducting the meeting or helping conduct the meeting. So roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commission President Mum?
Here.
And Mayor Neely is absent.
Okay. Any future agenda items from anybody?
No.
No? Okay. Hearing none, we're moving on to the discussion of the homeless population in Oregon City. And Jim, Ben?
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. I'll start us off here, just as kind of a reminder about why we're talking about this. Commissioner Mum had asked basically for a update on kind of where we were at now that it's been over a year that we've been living with our homeless population, the way that it's changed since Father's Heart came to town. I've got a couple caveats that I want to give up front before we give this presentation, just so everybody understands kind of where we're at. The homeless problem, as we're talking about all these issues, is very complex. You research any town, any county who's trying to deal with it, nobody has the magic wand solution that makes it easy. Look at what Portland's gone through. It's something that's very difficult for everybody to deal with. So that, I think, makes most people feel a little bit better that when we're all scratching our head, everybody else is scratching their heads. So it's just a flat-out tough problem. We had homeless people before the presence of Father's Heart. It has changed. There are more homeless people here than there used to be. Before, we kind of knew who most of the -- we didn't know who all of them were. Some of them are really good at keeping to themselves, but there were certain people who were kind of repeat customers, some of them that we knew very well. And now there's a lot of homeless people here that we just don't know who they are. There's too many. We are not here to bag on Father's Heart.
No, absolutely not.
You know, we're going to talk about some stats, but they're just statistics, you know? Father's Heart came here and the landscape changed. That's not us trying to say negative things about them. What I will say is that they run a pretty tight ship. They -- I think this problem would be much worse if they weren't trying so hard to do a good job of running their shelter. And I've said this numerous times, that if you're going to have somebody running one of those shelters in your town, we're probably pretty lucky to have Terry Gant doing it because she's pretty mindful of the fact that being a good neighbor is a key to her success, and even little things. I was there one day and there were some guys out back with their shirts off, and I can't remember what they were doing, but she knows what that looks like to neighbors, and so she went out and told them to put their shirts on. So she knows little things are a big deal to the community. And the last thing I'm going to say is, this kind of is a police problem, but it's a bigger problem than that. This is not a problem that we're going to arrest our way out of. You know, a lot of the issues and the complaints that come in, they're really not criminal complaints. Some of them are. But it isn't something that we're going to fix with a new ordinance that if we hammer people for violating it, that all this is going to fix itself. That is just not going to happen. So there's my caveats, and Captain Claire's going to go forward with this presentation with some pictures, kind of talking about how the last year-plus has been.
Thank you.
Commissioner? Like Chief Ben said, I've got a small presentation here, just showing some photos of what we deal with on a daily basis, and specifically our code enforcement department that has to deal with these, to identify them, post them, and then work on the cleanup efforts. And our patrol guys obviously help out trying to minimize the impact as we clean them up and people, so they don't return to the locations. Which brings me to this slide here. You'll see this is the underlying of the bridge at Abernathy and Washington Street. And you can see we've cleaned it up four times in a relatively quick or short timeframe there. It was a very, very popular location for some transient living. And this is probably one of the better photos I've seen. There's holes literally dug for their bathroom needs that are obviously there left when we do these cleanup efforts. And it's currently clear, and it has been for some time. But again, this is a very popular place for them to congregate. And so I got just a couple. Uh-oh. Oh, there you go. This one here is, as you can see, Main Street near 18th. And I haven't seen this camp, but I hear it's still there. We're trying to do the kick-out right now. Apparently you can see this camp from the Amtrak, as the Amtrak whizzes by, unfortunately, and also from Main Street. And you can see what's collected here, a hot tub cover for some concealment and some other stuff that he uses to build his camp with. Again, this is just May of 2014, and we're still dealing with this one here. This one here is underneath the Highway 99E, right at 9th and 10th. It's all posted, no trespassing. And here's this camp. This particular camp, our patrol found a seven-year-old child, female child, and her mom, living with some other adult men. And we were able to relocate the mom and child, but not a good situation for children, of course. This one here, off of Myers Road, across the street from Hagan. As you can see, it's actually in a natural resource overlay district, which isn't a good thing at all. And of course, there's a stop sign back there, not even wanting people to come into their camp. But -- and this is one that we have battled for years, right across from Hagan. It pops up frequently. And this is a very large camp that I have three photos of. Just couldn't capture it in all one photo. So again, you know, just your basic camp. It's in Newell Creek, but it's on city property. And here's more of it. And the last slide is pretty powerful of all the trash and debris that you see there. And what you can't really identify on this slide is, right on the backside of all that trash is just a cliff essentially, that a lot of that trash is thrown down as well that we just can't retrieve. It's down there in prior bushes, and you just can't go down and retrieve it. So it's quite a mess. It was a very, very large camp. It's clean now, as clean as we can get it, but it was a very large one. So just kind of give you an idea of what our code enforcement deals with on a weekly basis with these camps. And then here's some stats for you about how our -- oh, excuse me. I threw this one to the last minute. So here's a photo. This is actually in the Newell Creek Canyon. It is not city property, although, you know, the tenants come to and from the city for services. Looks just like, you know, it doesn't look very dirty. As you can see here, there's a camp, there's a camp, you know, a little fire pit there and some stuffs they were sitting on. And if you want to draw your attention to the little dam here, at this view, it just looks like, you know, kind of a fallen tree or something of that sort. But as you get a little closer, you'll see it's a man-made dam, and you'll see the trash bags there that are buried. I don't know what's in the bags, but they're obviously trash bags. And it's a man-made dam to get a little pool back there. And that pool is, I'm assuming for this pump, to make some sort of a shower or to access the water. So, you know, that's quite the effort to set up camp down there. As you can see, that I didn't give you a clean photo, but that's all been cleaned up. It's all clear as of today. But pretty -- went to extreme lengths to pool that and build that dam, so. So pulling numbers out of our database isn't easy, you know?
Sure not.
So these numbers are as close as we can get. To clarify, some of the numbers are very difficult, but they're raw numbers. So we're able to pull transient calls in general. So any call that regarded a transient description, this was the breakdown, of course, of the last three years. You'll notice the huge increase in 2013. It's my understanding that Father's Heart came to town the end of 2012. I think their business license was approved in October 2012. So what this means of the 188 of those, no action, no report taken, those are simply contacts, and we didn't write a police report or didn't pull a case number for those particular incidents. But we included them in the 587 because those are the dispatch calls for the transient calls, so. And we kind of broke down some specific crimes or civil matters, if you will, that are particular to transients and the homeless population. One is detox, which is if a person is drunk or on drugs or, well, drunk or on drugs. We take them to a detox center, which is apt as to be on Grant and Burnside. And the unique part of that is, not only does it cost us a --
Is that a Hooper?
Yes, Hooper. It costs us $150 to lodge somebody at the Hooper, but it's also taking one of our patrol guys out of rotation to transport them down there, book them into the Hooper detox. Who knows how long the line is to get our guys in and out of there? So it's, you know, unfortunate that there's not one closer, but it's quite taxing on our patrol guys to take them out of service, take them downtown Portland and come back.
So when they take them down there, they have to wait in the line? They don't get to go first because they're police officers?
Well, there's a Hooper -- I'm referring to other police officers that are there doing the same thing. So there's, I think last time I was there, it was years ago, there's only three staff members there checking people in and out. Usually two, a team of two, one doing medical and one doing kind of the person's search. So it's just a matter of how many people are going that night. Sometimes they close it down, and they're not even available.
Right, right.
But my point to this slide was the manpower it takes to drive them down there, and the delay, of course, pulling our guys out of the city to --
And the cost to us?
$150 per person, so.
Per person? Is that per day?
No, it's just per lodge, yeah.
Just to put them in?
So criminal trespass investigations, this includes business and/or personal property. So it's, you know, it's a significant increase, more than doubled in the last year. So this is residential and business properties. And prohibited camping, of course, has increased. That's a lot of the camps that we deal with and are identified, so it's pretty significant. And then this is the, of course, the camps that code enforcement are aware of, you know, the ones that are called in or they locate when they're going from A to B, doing other calls. Again, you can see the significant increase from 2012 to 13. The year-to-date, we've already got 11 this year.
How many people do we have in code enforcement?
We have one and a half code enforcement officers and one and a half parking officers. And then a support staff. So here's some of the kind of calls that just kind of stick out in our mind as we were making this presentation. Camping on the promenade, it's an ongoing problem we've had. Just recently, we had a call of four people camping back there. They got up and walked away and left all their camping gear there, obviously going to return. They have animals defecating on the nearby surrounding areas. They're defecating in the surrounding areas. That was reported to us recently. Camping and visiting the Abernathy Center as well as Abigail Gardens, same thing with their trash and their defecating. Trying to use the Pioneer Center, thinking it's a community center. And we reached out to the Father's Heart and had some communication about that, so that's hopefully slowed down a little bit. Had conversations with downtown businesses about people just, I've heard it referred to as walking dead, just kind of walking around town and really just walking aimlessly around town. Sleeping in the corridors and littering and urinating on properties downtown. A woman was found in the Barclay School as they were closing, and she was having a mental crisis, and we had to deal with that. And then a transient proceeding herself out of the 76 Station, as you can see there. And then, of course, homeowners in the McLaughlin District talking about the transits coming to and from the facility as well as around town. Chief Ben has met with Terry on several occasions and have a good dialogue, and we communicate with her well. And she's, you know, when we tell her we have a problem with a person or an area, she'll help us out and try to fix the problem, but she's got a lot of people coming in and out of there, so it's hard to keep on top of it, I imagine. Our zero tolerance on the camps. In 2012, excuse me, in 2013, with that, like the Washington Street Bridge, we just went zero tolerance and started arresting people out of there because they just didn't get the hint. We'd ask them to leave and come back a day later, and they would still be there. So we started zero tolerance, and it seemed to help, and it just kind of pushed them out of the immediate area, but they're still here someplace. We think the canyon's quite full, but we haven't been down there to check recently. So we're assuming a lot of them were pushed down to Newell Creek Canyon.
Singer Park, too.
Singer Park.
Mm-hmm. There's quite a few down in there.
And we've also had some conversations with the Dwyer District Attorney, Bill Golden, who has, he was involved in the Overland Park area, kind of cleanup, if you will, of the homeless population. And their primary goal is to, when people, when transients are arrested for trespassing or theft or some of that sort, instead of sanctioning them in some kind of a jail or probation, their sanction is to get them either treatment or get them a driver's license or help them with a job search, and that's their sanction. So they'll, you know, have to go do a job search or get an ID so they can do a job search or get some treatment for some drug and rehab. And so that's their sanction, and trying to help them progress and transition out of the homeless and out of the transient population. And it was fairly successful, according to Bill Stewart, I said Bill Golden, Bill Stewart, at the Overland Park. So we've had some conversations with him about bringing that to Oregon City and kind of seeing what that model would look like for us if we can adopt that. So we've done with him once. I think that pretty much concludes the stats. Greg, have anything to add from patrol or?
I don't know.
Any questions about those numbers or? Yeah.
How many people a day do we estimate go through a Father's Heart?
We actually just met with Terry two weeks ago, and she said approximately 70 a day.
Seventy? Seventy. Seventy?
Seventy.
And I just realized, I think, I haven't been calling in what's been going on on my property, so they're even down that far?
Yeah.
But I just realized it's probably from that same thing, so.
One thing she said on the numbers, too, is that it has increased, you know, as she's been in business. And the homeless population, it's a community, you know? Somebody comes and gets services here, and we were hearing from people, you know, our officers were, they sort of took exception to this, that our officers would, they say to everybody, hello, who are you, where are you from? And we do that to anybody, whether they're just getting to know people that we interact with. And what we were getting a lot with homeless people is they were from Multnomah County, and they had heard about the shelter here, and they don't like the, it's very competitive up there because there's a lot more. There's more services, but there's more homeless people. And so they'd hear about Father's Heart, great place, not as crowded, and they were moving down here. When we talked to Ms. Gann about that, she said that she had enacted a policy that was, you have to live here to get services here, you can't come from Multnomah County. And I said, so if somebody comes here and you say that, and then they say, well, I live here now, then what? And she said, well. So I, you know?
Then she just takes their word for it, like, yeah.
And she's in the business of helping homeless people, so it would be strange if she said, get out of here. You know, her job is to run a successful homeless shelter. You know, I, some stats that are, the population, the percentage of homeless people who are always going to be homeless, so if you went down there to those 70 people and said, got a brand-new house for all of you, Terry said that about 40% of the homeless are always going to be homeless, no matter what. They choose to be. And the numbers vary a little bit, but about 40% of homeless people have drug and/or alcohol issues, addiction, and about 40% of them have mental illness. About 26% of them have severe mental illness. And that, those two 40 percents, you know, some have both, you know, they kind of overlap. So luckily, so far, we've had some pretty rough interactions. We had one homeless guy who, luckily, one of our officers happened to be a K-9 officer who that guy interacted with, or that probably could have been a shooting. That was a really bad, it was a guy in the middle of Moll Avenue. And then we've had a couple other interactions, but so far, we haven't had some of the problems you've heard about up on the Springwater Corridor where every once in a while, some of these homeless guys get in a fight over something and somebody ends up dead. So we haven't had that yet. And then one last thing I was going to mention, this came up in another meeting, is somebody had said, hey, we've got all these homeless people in Newell Canyon. We got to do something about getting them out of here. Well, we just chased them into Newell Canyon because they were all around here. So we got them out of, from under people's noses. And so, and if we push them out of Newell Canyon, so, not to make that problem more difficult, but that's just the reality of where we're at.
Got one more question. Are you following the closure of the Portland Oregon State Hospital in Portland?
No.
Because many of those people are homeless, and they just get admitted to stay there for the 30 days, and it is being closed.
Wow.
Which one?
Portland Oregon State posh. So this may be something you want to look into. Commissioner Polly?
Yes, I've been in a Father's Heart, my Father's Heart. It's a great place. My son's basketball team made sandwiches, and we took them down there. So there's this really, you know, there's this great facility, and then homeless people come to partake in the facility and get the services. But my concern is, I've heard it called a shelter. When I think of a shelter, I think of a place where people can come and stay at night as well, to put them up. So we have this great facility, people come there, and then we have no place to house these people. And I see that very problematic. And I don't know if there could be a requirement, if there is a facility like that, that they also have a plan to house people at night to alleviate that problem. It seems like they should be required to have a plan. So that's my main concern, because you see all these stats, and everything's gone up since they've been here camping and.
We've heard that. We've heard, you know, you close your doors at 3:30, then what happens with the 70 people that come in and out of there, you know, that particular day, or it's 40 that day? We hear that. We don't have the answers for it, of course, because we don't know where they go. They're walking the streets downtown, as the business owners tell us. Woodfeather's just called on the 2nd of this month and complained about, as soon as he closes his gate, they're coming in the back of the gate to stay on the property. So there's a bunch of rocks piled up so they can stay on the property, and that's for extra patrol.
It just, it seems to me like they should have some responsibility to have a plan or build a facility to house them at night or have some sort of plan. Because otherwise, it just falls upon the city and the citizens to deal with, and it's not fair to the homeless, too. You know, they need to have some sort of plan or facility or option for nighttime.
Mr. Frazier?
Part of the reason I think this discussion is helpful is we wanted to check in with the commission to get some direction from you about whether you'd like us to explore some options, and of course, you want to receive these comments. As you might imagine, there are some limited things cities can do, and most of them are, some of them are preemptive, but a lot of them are reactionary. We're doing the reactionary things right now.
Right.
They're really expensive. I mean, you've got over 500 new contacts, and even if no one's ever arrested, the time we're spending, the money we're spending paying our officers to respond to this, and these are new, annual new contacts.
Yes.
So, you know, the city attorney has advised me, we have a few limited options. There's some zoning, some things we can put into our code, and some other things we can do, some of which you're suggesting right now, that have other plan restrictions, other location restrictions. But on the enforcement side, I think this is one of the least effective ways of responding to it because you're potentially writing a summons to somebody that doesn't have an address. You know, I mean, when you have little to lose, little to give up in life, it's pretty hard to make someone be responsible. And so I think we have to kind of think about, we will certainly go back and explore options. If the commission believes this is a problem you want us to work on, we will do that. But that's why we're having the discussions, to try to draw out different concerns and priorities that the commissioners have.
I might throw out there, just, we asked a couple people. If you want a presentation, I think it's important to hear, not just from us, but from some of the people who have brought some of these issues up. There's a few people, I don't know if you want to listen to what they have to say, but we did ask them to be here just specifically because it's, their perspective's different than ours, and.
Yeah. No, I agree. They should speak if they want to. They should fill out a little slip and come on up and tell us their stories and.
I've got one more question. When Bill, not Bill, Neil McFarlane was here from Primnet, I asked about the bus stop downtown. It had really deteriorated, and there was no lights and things. Have they done any, he said they were going to be doing something about that.
I'm not aware. I don't know.
He said it was on their list, but he didn't know where on their list.
Yeah, I do remember him saying that.
Yeah. I don't think it's a high priority. But yes, we would love to hear from citizens. Mr. Archer?
Maybe, Commissioners, while you're waiting, it looks like some folks might be signing up to talk. I guess just, it's probably more anecdotal because I don't have any statistics, but I would just tell you that I think it relates to the conversation. Our staff and our park hosts are recently reporting much higher incidence of issues with homelessness-related situations in our parks, probably especially at Clackamette, also Singer Hill, I think you mentioned that, Commissioner Mum.
Yes.
And other parks. It's not just those sites where you have places to camp and hide, but just places to congregate or hang out or be during the day when you have, you know, nowhere else to go or just want to be somewhere else, which, you know, and the issue that creates is that, of course, people have a right to be in parks, you know, unless you're doing something illegal. But just a lot of people hanging around, sitting under picnic shelters where our citizens were intending to use those, and there have been some kind of confrontational types of things. Our park hosts, I just met recently with our parks manager and our park host at Clackamette, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion about some of the concerns that are going on there. You know, again, just anecdotal, mine is more observational, not statistic-related, but we seem to have a higher level of number of those types of incidents going on, and just the frequency, and we're not sure what to do about it either from a management perspective.
It's true.
We're trying to figure it out.
There's a lot more, and there's people just wandering the streets with their shopping carts, and I see them up on top of the hill, so it's not just down here. They do travel up there. And if we want to encourage tourism to come to our facility, we have to offer a nice place for them, so. Commissioner, David Frazier, you're on the queue.
No, I've already.
Kathy?
Okay. I'd like to ask a question of police. Do you encourage people reporting things, or just like, I just go out and clean up the stuff?
We want people to call us. I know, I don't know if we necessarily, what we would do with a, you know, I think we, the calls are good. Even if you're calling, if there's some stuff in the backyard, I don't, we're not going to come seize it. But what is good is for us to have numbers, to either prove something is or is not happening.
Yeah.
And if people don't call, because one of the things that happened after a little while, I would get some calls, and people were mad because they're like, I'm not hearing anything, nothing's happening. And I said, well, people stopped calling. I think that in some ways, people just thought, well, this isn't going to change, I'm just, this is the new normal. So they stopped calling. And I, you know, we've said, no, you got to keep calling, and we're trying got to keep calling," and we're, we're trying to track. A lot of times, we can't go back and track something, so we'll start tracking something forward. There's different ways we can do that. And, yeah, so we, we still want people to call.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so Phyllis and Daphne, please come up and, together, and give us your comments. We just need your name and if you live in Oregon City.
You can go first.
Yep.
All right. Phyllis Scaring, at 9:16.
We don't need your street address, just if you live in the city.
Okay, I live in Oregon City. And we have near us the Oregon City Retirement Center.
Oh, yes.
Which has, I'm sure some of these people would be homeless if they weren't there, but they kind of run rampant over the, the neighborhood. And there are children in the neighborhood. In fact, there's a family with four boys who live right behind me. And you, you see the smoking pot and marijuana and drinking. And they leave their bottles and cans and, and that type of thing around. And it just isn't a good environment for families. And we would hate to see some of our families move away because of this problem.
Right. Thank you.
Daphne West, Oregon City. So first of all, we've been dealing with this for a year, and we've, I want to thank David Frazier, because we did call. The McLaughlin House was the biggest hangout.
Yeah.
And a simple solution, moving the park fence and trimming some hedges, has helped. So it's not as awful over there. And then since the spring, I wanted to thank Lieutenant Friat for helping us, because you wouldn't believe that the, what's the First Christian Church right across the street?
Yeah.
You will have a juniper bush, not a tree, a bush, a shrub that's four feet tall. And the, the beds that they had carved out underneath those with all the beer bottles and sleeping bags was unreal. And multiple parts of the property. And the church has taken a stance, you know, they, they don't want to, you know, be mean to the homeless. So, but they just have no idea of how much is going there. So we've been, we've been trimming hedges there, too. And then I also want to speak to your comment, Commissioner Roth, on calls being reported. I tell you what, we, I appreciate our police department. They've just done a bang-up job trying to help us with all this. But I feel like I am burdening them, calling. And all of us, we watch it, we can set our clocks for when they start the smoking pot in, in the morning. They cannot head down the street here and for, you know, to get up, their whatever, medical marijuana or otherwise. But we don't call because of it. And so his numbers are not inflated, because there's a lot more calls. And we know they can't get there quick enough.
Right.
I mean, because they've got real work to do. And...
But I think it is helpful for this stats, to have people call.
One of our neighbors, not neither of us, had someone sleeping in their garage. I've had my car rifled through. But really, it's, you know, the family issues with all the, just in her blatant use of marijuana, smoking and drinking in public. And then sleeping there at night, which we are just shocked that they were under little hedges like that.
Oh, they'll sleep anywhere.
We asked...
Not hedges, shrubs.
We asked the owner of the facility for lights down that one-way street that connects 10th Street with Center Street. And that hasn't been done. He built a little shed for smoking, but they don't necessarily always smoke in there. But there are no lights that he has put up to light that alleyway.
All right.
Phyllis is speaking to, it's a compound problem in the McLaughlin neighborhood because of the Oregon City Retirement Center. And it's just a nice little hookup, 12th and Washington, to 10th and Washington. And they kind of feed off each other and, well...
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, ladies. Denise?
Thank you.
Griff?
And I'm a neighbor of all the ladies sitting back there, and a, almost a 25-year resident of Oregon City. So I'm going to talk about two different aspects. So in, in my volunteer life, many of you know, I'm very active in the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. And I would say that the number two complaint that we have had in the last three years has been about the transient issue. I'm going to say it on the record, but I really feel that my Father's Heart, although a great facility, is an attractive nuisance. And we have not had to face, we've been very lucky. I spent 17 years working in Portland, in Old Town Chinatown, so I understand and recognize the signs. Of course, they have a lot more facilities there, a lot more services, a lot more availability. But as Chief Bann said, there is a network. They know the folks that are utilizing services. They, you know, it's just like anybody else's network. They know. So if there's a new place that's less of a problem, or they can do X, Y, or Z, that's where they're going to go. And I, and I get that. On my way to work every day, for the last three years, I would see two or three of the same people between 7:30 and 8 o'clock, riding bicycles or walking, and I knew exactly where they were going. And I didn't always see them leave, because of course, I was at work, but I just made the assumption. I don't mean, mean to speak negatively, and I don't want to come off as a holier-than-thou person. But in our discussions with the police department and with Father's Heart, we know that they were asked to leave the place they're at, they were at. The problem with them being where they are is surrounding a residential neighborhood.
Yes.
We have, you know, we've spent, and I'm sorry Dan left, but I remember Dan telling me when I moved here, that we were on the cusp of a change in the McLaughlin neighborhood, that we were going to be able to help make it better by bringing more families in and getting more established people in there. And I think that has happened. It's turned around. It's a great place to live. But the Neighborhood Association, again, that's the second problem that I hear about on a regular basis, not only at our meetings, but when I'm at the grocery store. I could be anywhere, and it comes up all the time.
Right.
And again, I know that, that she means well. It's not that I'm saying that we need to ignore the problem. I think we're a community that's not equipped to deal with the problem.
I think you're correct.
I know nobody in the city would want the facility in their neighborhood. I mean, I can, I've asked other neighbors, and they look at me like I'm crazy. So I don't know where the best place for them is. And that's part of the solution, is figuring out if there is another location. That used to be a bookbinding facility. It was a commercial business. You never heard a peep out of them.
Right.
So let me put on my other hat and talk about the impact from a personal standpoint. Probably living here, up until about a year ago, we parked our cars on the street. For the first time, our car was broken into. My husband did not report it. I reported it. I find that we will need to reactivate our neighborhood watch in our neighborhood, primarily because there are a lot more people in the neighborhood that we don't know. A lot of us pride ourselves on knowing, you know, who's around, what's going on, not necessarily everything, but you, you recognize people. It's just like anybody living in an area. I have found myself, and I've had to catch myself, being a little more suspicious about anybody walking up and down the street, because I don't know where they're going. As a volunteer for the McLaughlin Memorial Association, I have changed my path of walking. I make sure I walk by that house at least once or twice a day, just because there are people back there.
Mm-hmm.
There are people behind the church. There are people, you know, the other day, I was coming down the hill, and my passenger said, "Hey, there's somebody in the park, and, you know, you should call the police." Well, luckily, I have Bluetooth, so I didn't pick up my cell phone.
[laughing]
But, you know, for the first time since I've lived here, I've had three different situations where I've come out on, and on the public sidewalk, not necessarily on my property, but on the public sidewalk, I know that somebody has relieved themselves there.
Right.
I've never had to deal with that in the whole time I've lived here. And it's just like, come on. You know, I understand. One of the people I talked to personally, and I was told, "Well, I just couldn't make it back to the Oregon City Care Center." And I just said, "I really don't want to have that happen again."
Right.
And I said, "Nobody wants to have it happen on their property. I get it." I will say this for the record, since Phyllis and Daphne brought it up. With Lieutenant Friat's help, we have been working with Art Johnson, Senior, who's the owner of the care center. And he has made some progress. And so I don't want to say that he hasn't done anything, because he has, he met with us. I mean, I thought, took a lot of guts to meet with us and say, and tell him, "These are the situations that we're, we're facing." And why I bring that up is because some of the residents there, as Daphne pointed out, attract other people to come there.
Absolutely.
So a couple of the ideas I threw out, and I don't know if this will work, I'm going to throw it out in the public record, is that I know that in some neighborhoods in Portland, city has been able to work with business owners to restrict the amount of the 40 ounces that get sold. They're all over the neighborhood all the time.
Right.
We have been told that if we see someone with an open container, we are to call. Mr. Johnson is now on my speed dial. I call him. If I see anything, I am calling him. Give him a description of the residence, because that's what he asked us to do.
Yes.
And, you know, I could go back into my recents and probably tell you how many times I've called him. But I mean, it's just constant all the time. If it's not the troubled residents that he has, and he's actually, and he's trying to get them out of there. But they have to have a place that will accept them. So he ends up with the troublemakers.
Right.
And we've got about three people who make the neighborhood very unpleasant, not only with their actions, but with their language. I mean, I have never heard such filthy language in my entire life that's come out of some of these gentlemen. So we've got that compounded with the, the people that come, and maybe they're not all coming to my Father's Heart, but they've come to Oregon City and they're hanging out. And again, I see them downtown. I see them in our neighborhood.
Right.
I see them in the park.
Right.
I see them up, you know, where you live. I see them up, you know, up in the hilltop.
Yep.
And I just, I don't know what the solution is, but I think we all have to work together to try to have a solution. An out of sight, out of mind is not the answer to the question.
No, no. Okay.
But I think if we're going to have a facility, we really need to think hard about where we're going to put it and what the impacts are. Because again, the neighborhood that I live in, that I love, has not been as pleasant in the last two years.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commission discussion. I know we can't do a vote at all, but is there some direction? We would like to encourage staff to travel down.
I, well, I, I think that we should look at what's going in, in our neighborhoods. I know there's been another discussion about a different type of facility up off of Warner Milney or Warner Parrot. I think there should be some discussion, how we can keep our neighborhoods livable, and how we can cope with things like this.
Right, right.
Commissioner Polly, and just to be clear, I don't think that facility would be instead of the Father's Heart. I think...
No.
They're thinking that's in addition to.
Right, that's, yeah.
Thank you for saying what you said about neighborhoods. I think that's really important.
Yeah, but, but that's what I meant, because more could come on board. So what are we going to do when that happens? And to be prepared for that.
Right. I think we also have to look at, you know, McLaughlin is inundated at this point. I, we've not only got the care center, we've got Father's Heart, we've got the thing down here on Second Street. And it's, there's people everywhere.
Everywhere.
Walking the streets, you know, from these facilities. And to be quite frank, the ones down on Second Street scare me at times. We've had some run-ins with them. So I think that it's, we need to very, very seriously look at something that we're going to do to restrict, put restrictions on the current occupants of these places, or look at what we're going to do to maybe tighten things up so that things change.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith, what are your comments? Suggestions?
Well, what do you say? I mean, it's, it's a, it's a problem without a solution. And I, I think it's important, I think the comments in terms of the neighborhoods being more active and, and, I mean, it's not a, it's not a resolution by any means, but being more aware of what's going on in your neighborhood and revitalizing the neighborhood watches and things like that, I think that's helpful. But, you know, we, we want to be able to not refuse the ability for us to allow people to come in and help homeless and serve the homeless. But at the same time, you know, how do we weigh that with everything else? I, it's a, it's a very complicated issue, as we all know. And so I don't, I have no solution. But I think that this starts that discussion. We, we see how it's affecting, especially McLaughlin neighborhood, and in fact, the entire city, and how it's affecting the police department. So I, I see this meeting tonight, just as a, as a first discussion. You know, I was aware of most of this. There was a lot of this tonight, especially seeing the pictures of the camps, that I was not as, probably as aware of. So I, I think, I don't see this meeting being a, a, a meeting to resolve the issue, but to, to start talking about it. And I, I think that maybe having some more work sessions, you know, and I don't know what we tackle as we do more work sessions, but bringing some of the neighborhoods together, the police department continuing with that as well. But I don't have a solution.
I've got one more.
I don't think there's any solution tonight. But Commissioner Polly?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that Commissioner Roth has a good point about capacity, because we also are the county seat.
Yeah.
So we have all sorts of other services.
Other services, yeah.
For mentally ill.
Yeah.
And homeless, and that type of thing.
Yeah.
But yet, there is no overnight facility.
No.
I'm going to go back to that. And I think, I think that's a real problem, even if it was, even if there was no, you know, my Father's Heart. We still don't, there's still no place, the services that are in place have no plan for housing people. And I don't believe they all get back on the bus and go somewhere, because they don't.
I think you're correct about that.
I've seen it for years, even before this. And even in, you know, our establishment, mentally ill people try to come in, and it's, it's weird. So they have the day facility, but where's the whole, where's the whole plan?
Right.
And it's not being taken care of, and it hasn't been being taken care of, and it's been getting worse.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think it should be in neighborhoods.
No.
I think it should be somewhere with the county offices, or, or part of the bigger package, to try to take care of the problem and, and help these people, and put them into jobs, and, and get them independent. And I know that's a, that's a struggle.
Commissioner Roth?
Well, I think Commissioner Smith was talking about active neighborhoods and stuff. I think it'd be hard for us to find a more active neighborhood than McLaughlin.
Yes, you are, absolutely.
Absolutely.
McLaughlin is very active.
But what I would like to suggest maybe to staff is that, and I don't know if this is even something that exists, but take a look at cities that have had this problem and what they've used as their models to maybe help out.
We've done some of that, but we can, we can only do some more. And you're right, there's not a, the barometer we were using, I think, is that the number of calls that you saw presented tonight was something that the department and largely our neighborhoods, even though the problem existed before, it was at a sort of tolerable level.
Right.
And it's increased basically five-fold.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And so, but, and that's not tolerable. Clearly, clearly that's eroding the quality of life for the residents, not only those that are here tonight, but I would submit probably for every one of them who's not here tonight. So I would like to, you know, with the council's direction that you've given us so far, we can go back and study this some more. I don't think there'll be a silver bullet, but there are a handful of things that we can do. And some of these are going to require some legal advice from the city attorney, some...
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you.
You know, the, the amount we're spending, let's say, any city, you could say, "Okay, our city last year spent," maybe, let's, let's just make up a number, because that's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Three or 400,000 additional funds, public funds were spent on response to this. And then you could look at that problem, and maybe even talk to some of the providers and say, "Well, if we're spending this every year on this because it's not in an ideal location, would there be an incentive to relocate it for one year of that expenditure and put it somewhere?" Because it almost feels to me like it is in the wrong, it's, it's the wrong location for a noble calling, but it's the wrong place for it.
Oh, Daphne? Oh, definitely.
Certainly feels like the wrong place if you're living there. And I'm harkening back to my mentor 25 years ago, who always told me, when you're in the city management business, you've got to protect your neighborhoods first, because that's the community. That's why people come together. And if you can't protect that core livability of your neighborhoods, you don't have much to fight for. So we need to, I'm suggesting that we go back and study it further and bring you back, whatever options we can come up with.
I have one more question of you, and that's, you know, when you have a home alarm system and it goes off three times, you get three free ones and then you start getting charged. Is there a way to look at something that would be, okay, asking people, what are you here for? Where are you, what are you doing in town? And saying, okay, we get three calls here, and then you start getting charged.
You know, it brings up a really good point, and one was our nuisance ordinance. You know, there's certain properties that after a while, that we can put a lien on a house or a fine. But there's a link to the house. Usually the criminal activity is happening in the residence. And I think that's where this becomes a legal question of how do you make a nexus between somebody who closes at 3:30 and somebody who frequented them at 3:30, and then at 9 o'clock, they're doing something. And, you know, she says, you know, they're, you know, after we close, you know, they're not my problem. And that's the problem is.
And that's the problem.
That's the problem.
There are problems.
That's the problem.
Yes, for sure.
Well, it's, I think one of the residents who used the word attractive nuisance, you know, you invite, you invite them in and then close the door and say, it's not my problem. Well, it might not be yours, but it's certainly the neighborhood's problem. It's the city's problem, it's all of our problem. And again, I mean, if it were located in a more rural setting or maybe an industrial setting where you didn't have so many livability issues occurring every single day, I think the frequency and the intensity of the complaints and the expense of responding to all of it, and I think we're doing all we can, but if you write somebody a summons who doesn't have a house to live in or anything that they care about that normally people would be motivated by, it's very hard to get compliance. So you need to care.
They won't show up for court.
You need to care when you're closed.
Yeah, yes, I agree.
Location terms, it is in, you've got all these statistics now about the dangerous intersections in town. That 12th and Washington is a very dangerous intersection. And so to have a lot of foot traffic there, and that building is right on the corner.
And wasn't there a hit and run there?
Fatal of a patron of Father's Heart.
Yeah, yeah. So do you feel like you guys have direction from us as to where we should go next?
I do. I'm not terribly optimistic, but I really want to do something.
We didn't say we get an optimistic direction. I do, I do want to, I do want to, you know, move this forward.
Okay.
So.
We'll get working on it, and we'll bring back some ideas. Some of them will probably, just for the benefit of the public that are here, some of the legal things we may have to discuss in executive session with the city attorney. Doesn't mean we're not working on it, it just means we have to talk about it privately before we take any action.
And would you continue to encourage residents to call the police when they have an incident?
Absolutely. You know, something that Daphne says has been ringing in my ear, you know, you guys have more important things to do, you said. But the reality, yes or no? I mean, livability is the most important thing. And I've said over and over again, is people need to be safe in their homes, they need to feel safe in their homes. And if you don't like being in your house, that's a big deal. And so squeaky wheel gets the grease. And so if people are letting us know, sometimes we can fix things with just a couple more sweeps. What we do not like is having something become a major issue and then we go talk to a community and find out that, well, it's been going on for four or five months, but we didn't want to bother you. So we like fixing things when we just see smoke rather than flames all over the place, so.
Well, some of us, you know, are slow. I thought for a long time it was raccoons. Then I realized raccoons who don't drink beer.
Well, maybe they do, we don't know, yeah. But.
They would, but they can't open the can.
Come on up, Denise. But thank you.
Sort of a legal question, and I don't think we're going to answer it tonight. But what ability does the city have to, so you have something, let me just use the apartment building on Second that you brought up. We know that it's been a persistent and chronic problem. What ability do we have as a city to basically shut a place down? Like, I mean, I understand from what I've seen, the living conditions are deplorable.
It's horrible.
That sort, I mean, we're talking every kind of problem that you can imagine. It seems to me that that may be a violation of a housing code of some sort. But how, maybe one of the questions to ask our attorneys is, how does the city go about ridding problems, ridding our community of problems like that? The guy that has the house in Portland was in the news again, and he's got a situation where he got arrested, but all the people are living in his house. And he's the one that's getting in trouble, even though he's not causing it. So it's one of those things. So that's just one of those legal questions.
Yeah.
And then the alcohol question about the.
And I'm not going to substitute my wisdom for the city attorney who's not here, but I can say in general, the city has police power, meaning that you can use your police power to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the population. And that means all of them. And, but you have to do that in a way that's non-discriminatory.
Yes.
And the problem is that we kind of can identify this based on what we've seen or the statistics we have. We know what the trigger mechanisms were, we know what the problem is, but we can't discriminate when we're doing it. So we're going to have to be careful about how we approach it. But I'm going to be sort of looking for some, not just carrots, but sticks, and maybe some innovation here on how we might be able to get something done. I'm not, I just don't know how hopeful to be, but I just want to assure the residents here that we are going to work on it.
Yeah. Can we talk about if people call in with code enforcement problems? And, you know, there's, I'm thinking of one place where you could call in a dozen of them tonight. I don't want that to become a burden either, but does that help?
Well, it does. I think if we don't track the statistics and do this, we're just going to, if we ignore the problem as a population, we don't make those calls when we know they exist and they need to be made, we probably are going to overwhelm our staff a little bit by doing it. But if we don't, our only other option is to learn to accept it and live with it. And that doesn't seem like a very good solution.
And another choice, too, is to do it online on OC request.
And I want to make sure it gets into the PD system.
We prefer that, not that way. It's more trackable for us. Call into the non-emergency line, it's, that's one of the easiest. You say the word transient, and that is the easiest way for us to track anything. And that 587 number, or 578, whatever it was, the number's probably 750 or, you know.
Yeah, because not everybody calls in, yeah, yeah.
I've not seen very many times in my career spike in any statistic that dramatic.
Yeah.
It's just, I've just never seen it.
So any other discussion?
For anyone who's watching this at home, what is the non-emergency number?
It's 503-655-8211.
Okay.
655-8211.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All right, thanks you guys for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to more information coming out about it. City manager's report.
Thank you. The only thing I have to report tonight is the Erma Tinger House is about to get on some wheels and move.
Wheels?
Wheels.
We're not moving it.
No start of rumor.
Yeah, it's going to be kind of dramatic. Things are going to be happening there, and it's actually going to be lifted off its foundation, put onto some dollies and rolled slightly over. Because as you know, what's under it is not firm. It's not terra firma, it's just terra. So we're going to try to firm it up, and that's part of the construction work that's going to be happening. And we didn't want, I didn't want my phone to light up. I had a feeling I might get a few phone calls if we didn't share with you how dramatic that work is going to be when it starts. Because it's going to be, they're going to have to do some digging and excavation and all of that. Have I covered this?
You got it. The house will be moved directly behind where it's at in the parking lot area.
Really?
Wow, that's going to be huge.
When is this happening?
Not exactly sure when the move part is happening, but the, yeah. The contract is awarded, we told you about that last week at the commission meeting. And notice proceed has been, has been given, and they're going to start staging pretty soon. So in the near future, I don't know an exact date.
I would, yeah, if you find out, I would love to know.
We'll try to shoot you a date whenever we have it.
Sure, yeah, I'll share that with David, and we can make sure everybody knows.
Very cool, thank you.
And we, because of that, too, we own part of the parking lot there behind the restaurant next to the fire station. And we're going to be, we don't normally use much of that parking area, but we're going to, normally or not, we're going to need to use some of it so that we can do this construction. Because the staging of the equipment and so forth, we're going to use public right-of-way, but we're also going to have to use part of that parking lot. So the restaurant's going to have a little less parking availability than they had before for a few weeks until we... And this project's going to go pretty fast, but it's going to be somewhat of an inconvenience for the restaurant as well, but.
I'm sure they'll be notified.
Oh, they have that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll get through it.
Yes, we will.
That's all I had tonight.
Anything else for the good?